Right. Uh, copy of the draft minutes of August eleventh nineteen twenty six. The post and the table. Ready copy to the report which also is the post. We're gonna start with two presentations tonight. One is from the Greenport EMS Ivan O'Connor. Yes, Jordan Sweden.
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to go in. And bring the next to. Uh, does anyone need a copy, my chance?
Yes, please.
Yeah, and four.
I'll take one too.
I want this.
That's like an option.
I want you.
And how long would you like to keep it? Brief, as long as possible, perfect. Uh, my name is Andrew Connor. I have the very important opportunity to be executive director of Greenport Star at this time last year. So it's my one year anniversary. Uh, maybe just a little about me and then we'll go in and kind of go through the presentation itself to give some information. Uh, I joined, uh, my local volunteer reference about as a teenager, fell in love with EMS. We became a paramedic guy, speaking cold skill. Uh, from there it came with flight paramedic, working for the helicopter, working as a cool skill as a paramedic lab instructor. And for the last thirteen years worked for the aeronautical nationwide company, uh, as a director and part of the senior leadership team there. Uh, and here in New York State, I've been very fortunate to sit on, uh, the state emergency medical advisory committee, as well as the governor's, uh, task force on rural health, uh, for EMS and, uh, board member for the rural health. So certainly dedicate most of my time, uh, to emergency medical services. Uh, coming here tonight just to give a annual report, which I sent the document digitally, uh, to the president on Friday, uh, for distribution. Uh, in full transparency, just want to make sure that we come here as often as you would like us to come and have a great meaningful relationship to give you the information where we're at. Um, inside the document, I can go through the tabs real quickly, uh, to give you a broad overview of what I sent out. But I'll, I'll give you a quick natural perspective. Uh, most would say EMS is in crisis state of life. It's not unique to the local area, it's not unique to New York State. Uh, what we saw was that transition from volunteer to lead, where we went from having very little expense to having a tremendous amount of expense. And unfortunately, uh, the reimbursement rate has not kept up, but to be said, we're talking today. Um, here in New York State, I would say that, uh, we're actually doing better than most of our peers in EMS. We've seen about a hundred EMS agencies close their doors completely and just say, we can't do this anymore. Um, we fortunately here, Greenport Squad has been serving since nineteen thirty-six. We're not for profit. Every dollar we get, we put back into the system, uh, as well as we're now looking for donationcy grants to help fill that gap as well. Uh, and I'll probably conclude with whatever's in this binder, I'll go tab by tab real quick. And that might paint you a really good picture of how many actually two or three. So just look at tab one, which is just the letters. I did submit three letters to all of you. Uh, those three letters, one was to all of you as the client council. Uh, one was to the mayor, those two are identical, same. Another thing I'll give a shout out to is we did just get a reward this year, twenty twenty-five, and we are the DMS Agency of the Year. So at Columbia County, we were chosen to be the agency, they're automatically nominated to be the safety of your level, find out our message. So I did a third letter in here, which I thought would be important, uh, which is to funding county. For EMS coordinator did request to say in twenty twenty-seven, the county was to develop a project that they would take on the funding for EMS and the people. So it's the formula of some sort would be charged based off of usage, based off of parcels or based off of property value. Uh, what would you need going forward? I'll just emphasize that day-to-day operations were, were, were radiated. I would say that we're, we're losing a little cash every year, we're going into our, uh, fund balance. Uh, but we are surviving day-to-day. What's really complicated for us, and the reason we stand here before you today is really the future, which is our capital centers. An ambulance right now costs between a hundred forty, two hundred seventy-five thousand each. We have eight of them. Uh, we're putting tremendous mileage, wear and tear, so we'll need more ambulances, as well as each cardiac monitor that we carry, uh, we have six of them here in Greenport, is now sixty thousand a piece. We're gonna have to go and get new ones of those, as well as our stretchers are now seventy thousand dollars a piece. And we'd be eight to nine of those as well. So we have about a one point five million dollar capital expense that we're gonna need in the next three years or so. Um, so that's what really highlights the county, uh, message there. If we go to tab two, uh, that's just data over time of our financials. Uh, you'll see we've been very consistent with City of Hudson, uh, with the municipal funding, uh, seventy-five thousand every year since two thousand seventeen with the exception of, I think, the COVID year, we got an extra five thousand. The next page is all of our municipalities, uh, all the communities that we serve. So, uh, various towns that include the city of Hudson, uh, what they've been contributing since two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty-five. And then the graphs there in different colors is what other municipalities in Columbia County are contributing to their emergency medical services. And you'll see we're in the gray. Uh, so we have the least amount of investment. However, we also are the busiest EMS agency in about three counties. So we are very volume-based, more calls we do, our revenue we generate. Thus, we're only getting away so long without coming back and asking for significant funds. Uh, the last part of that tab is just the, the request of the change that we're looking for. Uh, so you see by each town, whether it's contributing to in twenty twenty-five, and then what we're proposing for twenty twenty-six, and what that dollar change is total. And, uh, the next tab, I did add a few different things. Uh, Green County just got them their comprehensive task force that they were doing for emergency medical services. That shows you all of the different municipal funds from each town over there. Uh, point's just to Catskill as an example. They run three paramedic ambulances on a day, two on a night, we run about four or five during the day, two on a night. They're getting about one million dollars from the town of Catskill. And if you look over at the next newspaper article, that's just the town of Ulster, taking about one point two eight million. Go private company, uh, to fund their EMS as well. And the third one is just Cohoes, which is, uh, paying out about fifty thousand dollars a month, trying to figure out our angles for the grandest quotes. So they're paying out fifty thousand a month, trying to figure out. So it's, we're not alone, we're, we're all in this, uh, together. And I thought the best way to come is to make sure that you all have the data. And that's what the next few tabs are. If I, for our nine ninety, which we do every year, I also understand our auditing financial, we get a third-party audit every single year, uh, as well as our line item budget, we're, uh, pretty, uh, lean at the moment. We're about three point four to three point five million dollars right now on our line ends. So I just want to make sure you have all of the information, you can see, uh, what revenue we have, what losses we have, um, what that looks like. Uh, the final tab in this is three documents, our impacted work in twenty twenty-four, which I'll start doing annually. Uh, so you'll all get that, uh, after the new year, which is kind of gives you, show you what we're doing for the community and how we're helping to kind of advancement. And then the other two reports are state national report on the EMS crisis. So it shows you that, uh, everyone is lacking EMTs and paramedics, uh, and they're also lacking money. Uh, and it gives you a lot of data results on why that is. And I'll probably conclude, you'll see three fact sheets in there, that is a very colorful, large fact sheets. These are probably the most important part, if you want to, you know, have a EMF one-on-one, uh, conversation. It's because, uh, from a billing perspective, for viewers, you know, to, to kind of view right now all the ambulances, about eighty-seven percent of those who care more are on some sort of Medicaid Medicare, which is only a fraction of the cost. So five of you would reimburse us from the state at three hundred dollars or less. Uh, the others four, you would reimburse at about five hundred dollars or less, when the cost of that transport average is about seven hundred seventy-seven. So we're in a gap, like a reason. And, and they just kind of fucked up. So we are fighting, uh, we're, we're with the associations for all the states. I said to the board of the New York City EMS and foster rescue association, we are asking for those Medicaid Medicare to help alleviate the municipal funding. Uh, but unfortunately, there's no, uh, promises for the next couple of years in any sort of increase in both Medicaid and Medicare. So that's where the gap really falls into.
I have a question, Ian.
I went through the, the whole thing.
Um, and I certainly understand the, the crisis that the EMS has been, and that I suspect the degree of lockdown still true with Medicaid, it's probably gonna go get worse.
Yes.
So this table here.
Yes.
Uh, the one request I would have, so you have, um, the transfer is fifteen oh nine, the total is sixty-three fifty. Uh, the standbys are where you can't get to another EMS user. And then you've broken out all of these, what was the individual calls by the reason for the call? So that's approximately forty-seven fifty. What would be really useful would be rather than breaking this out by these calls, if for the five areas that you service, um, municipalities, if you were to break that and say, and not by where the person is, but where the call came from. So if somebody in the city of Hudson, regardless of where they live, calls with, um, a general illness or breathing problem, whatever, this is the total number of calls we got from Hudson, this is the total number we got in, uh, uh, Camden or whatever. And then that would give us some context for understanding the differentials and pricing that you're asking for each of the municipalities. Because clearly now, obviously CNH is in Hudson. So pretty much all of those transfers are going to have some Hudson contact. Um, but this is what I would really like to see by municipality.
Absolutely, uh, we're actually just about to get a software in this year that we can view events based on call location, not necessarily their address, which would be great. So we can show you based off of every single, um, municipality we serve where those are.
But do you know right now, uh, where your calls are originating from? Like, can you say, we have fifty calls in Hudson, this year?
You're about fifty percent of our nine ones per year.
And is that some data that you could present by municipality, right? That's all, that's all I would really like to see, because this is, we're in the beginning of the PEA process. And your ask here is going to be part of, uh, the budget process. And in order to evaluate, um, what, what can and cannot be done, then that's kind of information that would be really relevant. Um, and the other thing, you know, just on the budget perspective, just as a general observation, um, I think we need to have a budget process that is sufficiently robust to deal with things like this that are gonna be, that are unexpected. They're different from a prior year, but we, we have no, um, elasticity at the moment in our budget. I have to go into our fund balance last year as we recovered. So I think that's something in general, that's not for you, but for us as a council, I mean, we really need to look at. But if you get that data in the next week, that would be two thousand.
I have definitely.
Uh, thanks, Tom. Um, uh, sorry that I couldn't be there to ask this in person. Uh, I just want to add to Margaret's, uh, another potential data point would be how, I mean, you already mentioned that about fifty percent of the calls are originating within the city of Hudson, which could include, you know, people working there, visiting, because it is the city center of Columbia County, so that makes sense as well. But how was, uh, you know, the budget breakdown for these previous years since two thousand seventeen that you say it's been kind of a steady rate that you show on this, uh, table? How was that generated? Was that based off of volume? Was that based off of, you know, that municipality or town's budget? You know, we, if, that would provide a deep, you know, context to how, you know, it was somewhat relatively, you know, what seems like it's fair, you know, sixty thousand, seventy-five thousand, fifty thousand, whereas now, all of a sudden, it's going, um, you know, we're almost four hundred percent, uh, you're, you're asking us for a, uh, amount that is about four hundred plus percent over the next highest, uh, contribution. So just for, um, you know, making those, uh, budget, uh, process a little bit easier, that would be good context to have.
Absolutely, and I appreciate that, because as of now, there's no formula to why those numbers existed. Uh, most places are doing it based off of like three different things, either population, usage, or parcels. So that's like the magic thing. So we, you know, I, I didn't want to get ahead of it and say that if the county in twenty twenty-seven doesn't have a long-term solution where they equalize it across the entire county, uh, my goal would be then to come back to you next year with a five-year plan, right? Because it's unfair to every year come back to you and say, you know, will the Medicaid increases cause this? Would, uh, in two years, animals' costs cause this? What I'd love to do is say, can we all agree within at least our community, if the county doesn't do it, say, do we equalize it based off of these three things? And here's what that looks like for each option, um, of that cost. So I would love to do that analysis, but if the county's about to do it, I'd hate to do that electric side, just to find out the county might do it.
General, would you all?
Well, I mean, I was, I was going along the same lines, because when, when I, I read through this this afternoon and I, I was shocked, actually, at the number, and I thought, oh, it must be a mistake. But then I kept reading, and it wasn't a mistake. What you were asking from us, I mean, the population of Claverick is, is larger than ours. And then they're paying a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars less than we are. So I was just, I was confused where the formula was, and you're saying there's no formula.
There's no formula. Like, so, so I'm happy to make one. It, it, it gets complicated, uh, depending on if all of you, your feedbacks, and I have to say, hey, we're lying based off of all three, just because it would, it would take, uh, quite a bit to extract that information. Um, but it certainly, I think, what is justified long-term, especially in our relationship as we grow in this relationship coming to you, um, I think it, it's a hundred percent validated, just whether or not we do it localized for Greenport Squad, or we hope that the county does it in twenty twenty-seven.
Let me say that, um, I believe you, the first and recent years, we come from EMS to speak to us, we usually discuss it later. Uh, secondly, uh, as just earlier, it's a BEA decision, not in their council, who's supporting it. And I'm pretty sure that they're not gonna agree to it. I don't remember that there's three of us, um, to that kind of raise. However, if it doesn't come through the budget, you're welcome to come back after the budget's settled, with any request in mind. That's always a possibility. But, uh, we'll see, we'll see what happens during the budget process. Tom?
Thank you for coming here. So two things I think you're introduced is a reality check for Hudson, because Greenport Rescue Squad started out as a volunteer, and now to pay. That's a reality for us as a council to support our partners, to support our volunteers, to ensure, because God forbid, it turns around and we have to get a paid fire department, you know, we're, we're not gonna exist. So, you know, that's a reality to, in that regard, of the reality of EMS. Also, I think that, I don't know if your data reflects calls for service for fires, right? Even if there's no injuries, you still go to fires to protect our fire, to be there for a fire. So, you know, so I think, you know, the need is there. Now, the other side is, your ask is very hard for you. And I think that, I think it'd be fair, but I'm sure the other municipalities, the data is, is, you know, is similar, but also you probably asked them in the past for an increase. And I think at least for this year, you ask across the board an equal percentage, right? Because, you know, you're, you're, you're asking Greenport for ten thousand dollars more, right? You're asking for us. And I think that also for the council, we need to understand, we need to invest in time for our supervisor, for that project that can be proposed, because that's gonna change the financial, the financial to unfold. So I think, you know, there's room for negotiation for this year, um, for what you're asking. I think, you know, again, you're right. On the other hand, you know, uh, we, we out, you know, we advocate for our nurses, our doctors and everything, for a bit living wage, right? So we, we can't neglect EMS, and asking the same thing. So, but on the other side of it, you have to understand hitting us, like, with images. You know, you're not, it is not gonna end well, right? It is being issued. So I think that crunching your numbers, kind of coming back with a little bit more equally distributed, similar municipalities of what I'm asking for that. I get it, and I, and I'm trying to figure out, when you say transfers, right? Does that mean transfer from a hospital to a public medic, right? So that means it could have generated from chat, but could it generate from another municipality? But because our hospital is in, so the numbers could be skewed, right?
Right, we, we pull out the, so year to date, we've done twelve hundred ninety-nine transfers from the hospital to all A men, or to somewhere else, nursing homes, wherever the case may be. The request that we focus a lot on is the Greenport Rescue Squad request, which is a twenty-five hundred number, so that's people calling that are wanting for those issues. And then we also carve out the Columbia County EMS system, which is, uh, over a thousand as well. Where we move around the county, we do some transport. So we'll, we'll always bucket them into those three categories. Um, and when we bring out that data, we'll show the difference for sure.
I think it's also important that you explain, you know, your reimbursement, right? Because my understanding is that if, if I am being treated, I mean, you cannot bill my insurance companies for medicine, you get incorrect.
If I, if I transport you?
Even so.
Oh, even if I transport you correctly, it's a flat fee.
So, so, so you could lose out on your, on some of that money, right? Because it's, you know, you're giving, you know, you're giving me medicine, but you're not getting reimbursed for it.
And I think your, your point, a lot of people ask us, you know, flagging, we have four or five ambulances on a day. Uh, winter walk, we have four or five ambulances on a day, fire calls, all of that doesn't generate any revenue. We don't build a town, we don't build cities, we don't build. Uh, if we go on a call today, we give medication, the issue doesn't leave, we have no mechanism at this current moment. So we absorb all of that cost. So that's why, to your exact point, is when we go on a call, you know, it's seven hundred seventy dollars on average for all we say, we transport forty-five hundred people to hospitals, how we get the, we're only getting reimbursed about five hundred eighty of that.
Right, and it also depends if you're VOS and AOS.
Correct, yeah.
Right, so I, I think that data needs to be included, because I, I don't think many know what that means, right? In terms of that breakdown, uh, how that, how that reimbursement is, is done, and how, what your cost is, and some of that. And again, we know way back, you know, you're only getting fifty percent of Medicaid and Medicare, um, normally, right? In terms of your reimbursement.
And then, yeah, a partial fraction. So if we take it to the hospital right now, uh, a Medicaid recipient, about two hundred dollars, maybe Medicare, or you're lucky, maybe five hundred. Um, and then typically, most EMS agencies around the state, if they're with private insurance for twenty-four hundred dollars, we only have ten percent of our population has that private insurance.
And, you know, and we're projecting in, you know, in maybe three to five years, you know, additional three hundred to four hundred residents with the housing that's being proposed, right? So that's only going to increase those calls. So that's why I think it's very important that, um, we as councils, and if you come back and let us know what we need to do on our end to educate ourselves on what the county's plans are, and how that's going to affect us and minimize this financial hit, uh, that is being proposed. So we can be more, uh, aware of what is next door. But, uh, I, again, I, I, I know the numbers, I see them, and I understand, and I know the need, and I see the importance of what you're doing. And as someone who has written in the ask, you know, the service is totally needed and very quick, because you're so close to it. Right, I, I mean, obviously, Claverick, uh, you know, stop for, you know, your, your call is farther away to attend to those needs. Where if you're coming right from your department with a man crew, it to serve us quickly is very important, so. So I think we have that in terms of our advantage. So, I mean, again, I, I, I hope we go back, work the negotiation out, work, say, listen, this is why we put, play this up to educate us to look at the county, right? To say, we need to do something now, we, again, this year, you know, is, it's a number, I, I can't even imagine that happening. You know, I would be, I would be impressed and very happy if we, we do a hundred thousand with this year. Uh, just because it's, it's potentially more than what we did, and potentially more than what you're asking in the early months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I have a quick question. Um, then we're just to extract, you can go, John, Nick, what's that? Um, so these calls and the numbers is based upon where the call originated, not the residence of the individual. So if someone has to go from CNH to all A men, that's still a Hudson-based call, regardless of where the person actually resides.
We would have to extract like that, correct?
Yeah, fine, okay, fine, great, thank you. And then number.
And so that's why I was obviously going to break that up in non-transport.
Got it, yeah. So, and then number two is, I'm sorry, capital campaign of one point five million. Um, is that, so is that, is that like extrapolate over years? Is that like included in this number? Um, how?
In the second page of the Columbia County, it would be about three hundred thirty thousand a year, uh, over time. So that's, and, and in full transparency, most rescue squads, like we, they never plan for capital expenses, they pay for that at the canes.
That's it.
When we had cash, now we have no cash, and now we really have to plan it ahead. So we're working with leases, like right now, in full transparency, right? We never had to lease ambulance, we're leasing our ambulance, we don't own them anymore.
But, and the, and the real reason for this major jump, this increase, like, like you said, is like we're going from volunteer, from volunteers to paid staff. And that's why we're staying in such a major.
Yeah, I would say, uh, the pay staff and supply man, I, I'll tell you, we are very fortunate, and I'll, I'll emphasize, our EMTs and paramedics are some of the best, but they are the busiest too. So we, we have to see them best, and we try to achieve some quality of light. But I will say, it's hard out there. You have to compete, because, uh, without paying more, uh, we will have no one. And we're, we're, I hate to use the phrase, like a two-bit fail, if we don't do well, the hospital becomes backlog. The CC, CC, this is the middle part, and all the rest of the county's gotta come in. We, we just do so many calls compared to others, we're so busy.
Thank you. Just, just to add a little bit, and just maybe explain a little bit about when you say the importance through your staff. It's not just your staff, because if you don't have your staff, we have to depend on others to cover, which that makes longer times to address Hudson's issues, correct?
Oh, absolutely. If we went from today, we have five crews on, if we went down to two, which we were at at one point during our whole, um, it, it puts a strain on the system, and, and the whole system plus the hospital. I emphasize the hospital, because if those people are not being moved all the way med to Spago, so you're giving birth, pediatric, trauma, uh, there's no one else to do it. Because we take any patient, and this is very important to say to everybody who runs this, we're not private. We put patient care first and foremost. We take care of anyone, regardless of the ability to pay, regardless of their insurance, we help them. Some places, you need to show your insurance or pay their charge. We will never be bad, right? We're always gonna take care of every human being as, as, as a person that's needing medicine, help, and then figure out the backend. But I will say that, that's the other fear, is if, you know, we have that value of mission with others as well.
Okay, thank you, Rick.
Thank you all very much. I've been truly here for a partnership. So if you think of anything, my email's in the back. Don't hesitate to ask too much of me, I'm here to help and, um, looking forward to the years ahead.
Thank you all.
Thank you, thank you.
We have another, I hope, much shorter presentation from Power of Community Energy, as you probably know. I assume CIC has been working on this. And we have Brad Tito here to explain what it is on Zoom.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Brad Tito. I'm the director of Community Energy at Power Market. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Good. All right, I'm just presenting a slide, uh, some slides, and then we'll get started here. So, uh, members of the common council, mayor, thank you for the opportunity to present. I, I'm here to talk about launching a municipal community solar campaign in Hudson. Uh, this is a municipally-led outreach effort that would connect Hudson residents to a community solar project located just outside of Troy, New York. And at its core, this is a green initiative to encourage participation in community solar, which is a program where residents can benefit directly uh, from savings on their electricity bills, up to ten percent per year. Uh, so, before I go deeper into how this works, let me just tell you a little bit about Power Market. We're a New York company, employee-owned, with extensive experience, uh, developing and managing community solar programs. We're active in eleven U.S. states and have partnered with dozens of municipalities, uh, across New York to deliver clean energy savings to residents. Uh, in fact, here's a listing of our local government clients. Uh, Power Market has enrolled hundreds of municipal buildings and facilities, as well as helped dozens of these municipalities launch these kinds of community solar campaigns, which is what I'm here to talk about today. For example, we've done similar campaigns. Albany County, Otsego County, just to name a few. Now, a little bit of background on how I came to present to you today. Last year, the city of Hudson passed legislation authorizing community choice aggregation energy program right here in Hudson. And in January, the city issued an R F P seeking a C C A administrator, and Power Market responded to that R F P. We're a registered C C A administrator in New York, approved by the Public Service Commission to serve in that role, and our proposal was designed to be flexible. It included not only C C A administration services, but also the option to run these community solar campaigns in partnership with the city. And because we're also registered as a community solar provider by the P S C as well, we thought we'd offer that as part of the package. Well, as we discussed these opportunities with the administration, Mayor Johnson suggested that I bring this concept to the Common Council to share more details and answer any questions you may have. But let's start, please, with just the basics. What is community solar? And this won't take long, I'll get through my presentation quickly. Community solar is a solar farm. The clean energy that's generated, it is fed directly into the power grid, but solar credits from these projects are applied to each participant's national grid bill each month. So these credits reduce the amount you pay, typically saving residents up to ten percent per year. But savings vary from month to month with the amount of sunshine. When you enroll in community solar, there's no equipment installed on your home, no change in your utility service, this is not an E S C O, there's no switching of your electricity supplier. And just to be clear, we're not proposing to build a community solar project in Hudson. This project is already built. The campaign is simply a way for Hudson residents to benefit directly from this project by connecting their utility account so that they receive these credits each month and save those families money. Okay? Here is the project. Again, we're proposing a community solar campaign. It's an outreach effort. This is a picture of the actual project. It's been in operation since September of 2020, and it's on Garfield Avenue, just outside of Troy, New York, in the town of Brunswick. So here's how a campaign would typically work. An official letter from the mayor goes out to residents. That letter directs them to a landing page where they can quickly enroll in the project. And Power Market manages enrollment, customer support, and we regularly report back the results so that you can see the impact of the campaign. And the city isn't responsible for any administration of the program or any cost whatsoever. We handle everything. And from the resident's perspective, it's pretty simple. They receive the letter, they go online, or they call our dedicated support line, and they enroll in the project in minutes. Starting early next year, they start to see monthly savings automatically on their utility bill, and that goes on automatically for the life of the project, roughly twenty years. Now, now that I've explained how a campaign in Hudson would work, I just want to show you a few examples from other communities we've worked with. Here's an example of a landing page we created for the town of Aurora. You can see it's clear, user-friendly. Below the fold, you'll see more information about how community solar works and more information about the project itself. But every page includes contact information, it's our New York-based support team, all the pages can be translated into multiple languages. Next is a flyer, this is just something that could be posted at the city hall or put in community centers, handed out at events. We have a full range of these kinds of materials that we would make available to the city. We'd print and do all that. Here's a letter that is from the mayor to residents. This is one from our city of Utica campaign. For Hudson, we'd prepare this letter for the mayor's review and approval, customized for the city. In our experience, this letter is really the single most effective outreach tool. It builds trust and it drives strong enrollment. Here's an example of publicity that we can get. Media generally covers these as like the launch of the campaign, and then often a follow-up story at the end just to report the results of the campaign. And finally, here are just some campaign results. These are letters that were sent out from municipalities, showing the number of people that signed up as a direct result of this letter-based outreach. And you can see the number of households we targeted. It's pretty great. Here's some more detail, and without getting into all of this, basically what you're seeing here is the number of households we targeted, the number of people that signed up, and then the enrollment rate. And this is just from a selection of campaigns that we've run over the last eighteen months, but the results are very consistent. We see about two to six percent of households sign up for these, which translates into real measurable savings for residents. Based on the number of households here in Hudson, we would expect to see about a hundred enrollments from our first campaign, and I think that's very achievable. But there is some urgency to this. You know, as you may be aware, federal cuts to clean energy programs are already creating uncertainty in the project pipeline. These projects are directly affected, and the capacity we have today may not be available tomorrow. So these projects are secure today, but acting now, just make sure that there's still space for Hudson residents as time goes on. And really, the next step is very simple. We just provide the city with a package for your review and approval of these campaign materials, and then the campaign can quickly launch after that. It's a very low-risk, high-impact opportunity for Hudson. It's no-cost, green initiative. We deliver real results to residents, demonstrate progress on clean energy, and earn recognition for the city's leadership. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Brad. Question from Hudson. Rich, before you ask a question, has a question? How many responses did you get there?
The original R F P was for the community trade aggregation. There aren't that many companies, there aren't, we could do that, leaving out several, and that's a Josh Kong question. And these are approved by the state?
Yes. Okay. Yes. President Ollie, Brian?
Hello, Brad, thank you for the presentation. Just have a quick questions to try to wrap my head around this a little bit better. This program essentially gives exclusivity to your company that the citizen, like, am I understanding this correctly? The citizens of Hudson's would basically either, like, if they wanted to buy solar power credits, they would have to go through you, or is this a different type of program that they still have the option of going with another, you know, company that's selling solar? Not solar panels itself, just solar energy as a supplier?
Right, the, the community solar. So your residents are free to choose any community solar provider they want. The other community solar providers may be not coming to the city with this kind of turnkey opportunity to bring those benefits to the city. But yeah, they're free to choose any provider they wish.
Okay, all right, so there's no real exclusivity here, it's just you're making it simpler for residents of Hudson's to choose you over having to find someone that may or may not actually offer that service for the city. And the other thing is, I see a few slides mention up to ten percent. You know, what are the real world ranges? Is it, you know, anywhere from one to ten? What are, you know, what are we, I feel like that's a very common, you know, marketing term for, you know, up to ten percent. So maybe there is one of those municipalities on average sees a ten percent, or one household sees ten percent, but everybody else is getting two percent or five percent or six percent. But what is, what is the normal ranges? And obviously, I understand that it's based off of how much you generate and what the cost of, you know, doing business is, but if you can give that context, that would make things more clear for, you know, those who are watching and obviously us.
Sure. Well, let me say this, okay? The solar farm produces electricity that flows into the national grid system. National Grid issues these bill credits for the power, and those credits are applied to residents' accounts. Residents pay only a discounted portion of the credit value, so about ninety cents on the dollar. So if you receive a ten-dollar credit, you pay nine dollars and keep one dollar as guaranteed savings. The solar developer is compensated through this process, but only after the credits have been applied to the customer's bills and the residents' savings are locked in. In other words, the developer only gets paid if the residents gets their guaranteed discount first. So it's, the, the basic way that it, it works in terms of the savings rate is that there is a fixed savings rate on every dollar of credits that are applied to the bill. The question of how much do you save total over the course of the year? It's dependent on how many credits are applied to your bill. Well, we look at your historic usage, and we try to size your allocation from that project based on your historic usage so that you get that full ten percent. But the reality is, you could use more or you could use less, and the other reality is, the sun could either be shining very strong in a month or it may be not. So it's just a fact that the savings rate, the savings that you actually experience might be less than ten percent, just based on those changing factors. But every credit that is applied, that's savings, and so we try to get you ten percent, and in most cases, it probably ranges from eight to ten percent realistically. So that's kind of where things stand. People typically don't get two percent or four percent, which, if, if those credits aren't applying to people's bills, these solar developers aren't getting paid. And then those projects that they got the financing for aren't getting repaid. So it's in everybody's interest to make sure that you maximize the savings on people's bills.
Sure. So, to sum it up, residents who sign up for your purchase, purchasing your, you know, the credits from you, essentially are guaranteed a savings, but it is variable depending on the variables that you mentioned. Is there any guarantee to the customer or the resident that, it will basically, essentially like you'll get a discount on your power by participating in this program as long as the, the larger share of that, your usage is coming from there? Is there any kind of way to guarantee that through this program, there's no increase of cost? Like, the solar power that is being delivered to the customer is not, is never really going to be more expensive than not having solar?
Right. They will never be more than they would pay if they weren't participating.
Right.
Absolutely, yes.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. I just wanted to kind of pull that out of you. I, I understand that because we have solar at the house that I'm at, so it's basically like that, it's almost always cheaper, there's really no loss unless you buy the system yourself. But I think it's important to make that clarification that, you know, there's no exclusive, like, you don't have to stay with you, the resident can switch anytime, there's always a saving if you participate, and you can always opt out. Because there is a portion of your slides that says there's a exclusivity for twenty-five years, but that is because that is just you as a partner for the city, not you as a supplier for the resident, right?
Well, the resident can cancel anytime without a year penalty, and we don't collect any payment information, credit card information, anything from the customer. So even if we wanted to charge, we couldn't.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification.
Another question. Mar.
Yeah, Brad, Margaret Morris. You touched on this briefly at the very end of your presentation. You have a solar farm that is producing a finite amount of solar energy, and you were talking about how, you know, you would anticipate that approximately a hundred residents, based on your experience, would sign up. So obviously, there is a limited capacity for you to enroll people in the farm that you've got. At what point do you expect to be at maximum capacity in terms of people you can enroll? Or do you have plans for expanding your, your solar farm?
Well, this one particular solar farm has, like you said, a certain amount of capacity, probably enough for about two hundred people to join. We're anticipating about a hundred, but even beyond this, we have like hundreds of projects in New York State, and we're constantly adding new accounts to different projects. So if this one fills up, for whatever reason, there are many more in the pipeline that are coming down.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Anything else? I'm going to, thank you. So, so basically, this is, because we have two, right? We have the supplier and you, so this is to assist on the supply side end, correct?
Correct.
And, and like I said, there's no guarantee of what the savings is going to be in terms of initially. So you would have to, the goal is to stay in it long enough to see what it's going to work on for each individual. Because you can't, I mean, I'm assuming six months, you're not going to see what, you know, northeast weather, things like, you're not going to see it in six months. So what is your recommendation on how long to commit yourself to the savings or to see the, the benefit of the savings?
Yeah, I, I mean, I typically would, I would say twelve months, twenty-four months, you get a very realistic assessment of where things stand with your subscription, and if you're, if it's meeting your expectations. You know, sometimes, you know, people don't have a usage history, they just moved into the area, and so we don't know exactly how much they're going to use. They, they're encouraged to call up Power Market, you know, our phone number is all over everything, and ask about their savings if they have any concerns. We can look at their account, maybe up their allocation so that they're getting more credits on their bill every month. Again, it's in our interest to try to make, make that right for customers. But I, I would say you're right that the, the initial months, if there isn't a lot of sunshine, there aren't going to be a lot of credits on the initial couple months. Like, it builds over time, and there's a, there's a mechanism that allows monthly credits, if you get too many in a month, it, it carries over to the next month. So, you know, the, the pattern is, you get through your first summer, you've built this surplus of credits, and then it carries over through the winter months, and over time, you really do start to see that, like, eight, nine, ten percent savings in total.
See, that's, see, that's, first thing, you know, I think major, majority of individuals, right, are going to think this is a scam, right? Because it's very difficult to understand. And I think, you know, I think the city at one point was dealing with the credit issue with their bill, and it was a nightmare. So I think that to sell this, you really need to lay it out a little bit more user-friendly. And, you know, because again, I think there's going to be, you know, a lot of people hesitant on, on change. Okay.
Sure. And, and if there are any issues with the marketing materials that we provide, that they are not clear, you know, we would certainly revise anything. It's, it's all subject to your review and approval.
Rich, yeah, so I remember on the council last time, the city signed up with Eastlight Solar, and we get about ten percent credit every month. Now, the issue, the, it wasn't a nightmare, it's just a little confusion, where it says credit on the bill, but no one really understood it because National Grid doesn't explain exactly what the credit is. But it is a credit that the city has been getting on municipal buildings. Now, when we had looked into community trade segregation, which basically is you bundle it up and you go out, you bundle everyone up to the community, and you go out and you try to price various, you know, S and communities together, but what they found is that it's not going to be cheaper. So instead of, and that is an opt-out program, which means that everyone goes in and that you have to opt out. This is an opt-in program, which is very different, which means that you have the option to opt in. The other community trade segregation was an opt-out program, everyone got in, then you could always get out. This we felt was, you know, this community, community solar and these fields of solar panels really are, in a way, kind of the future because it's much cheaper to put solar panels on a field and on individual houses. So, and you can just, you know, via credits, you can buy into that program. So that's why the C I C is putting this forward. Josh Kong has met with the mayor's office on this, and, you know, they're standing, they're standing, and you want to say that, that's what we're pushing.
Has this, has this company been selected for the R F P fund, or is it a good chance?
Is this company been selected? Yes, this company is the one that's been selected through the process.
Okay. Brad, just a real quick question, and maybe this is a checkering of qualifications. That two-seven-two-nine is the active number of National Grid accounts, but actually represent a meter that is being used now?
I don't know. What?
The two-thousand-seven-hundred-twenty-nine number, you use multiply to get to the hundred and nine, so that's a National Grid account that are currently active, as in being metered now, I don't.
Households.
That's the census number of households, census.
But that's not the actual National Grid number?
No. That's just approximate for the number of, of accounts that we.
Okay, so, oh, yeah, that's curious. Right, thank you.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you. That's just approximate for the number of of accounts.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Very much congratulations. Remember, we get a chance to let's get to our department reports. Representing fire, I believe, with you.
Report for August of this year. Five fires. Two structural fires, one being Wonder Bar, the other being one on 300 block of Warren Street. It was a kind of rear porch that got some of the building. That had a fire inside of the roastery. Parkway and Warren, which was contained to. One of the roasters, where we take that apart and get it out of the building. Mental damage, a penny to the building. They had a grease fire on Columbia Street. And as we were pulling up to the structure fire at Wonder Bar, we dispatched for a dumpster fire in one of the breweries. Which usually company handled for us because we were tied up. Two motor vehicle accidents with injuries, both being e-bikes. The one down, I believe Captain Miller reported on it last month, was a version Warren. And then the other one was Frederick Street and Columbia. That was right at the end of the month, so I don't know if that one was included in the report. And then one pedestrian accident. One chemical spill, which was bleach in the basement, people trying to clean or come with bleach without added water. Skid fell throughout the residence. We had one electrical. Small electrical fire up at the boulevard. One usually was to Quabrick or a hot tub on fire next to the house. Never think that a hot tub will burn the way it was. And it was pretty good when we got there. Had four good intent calls and 29 false alarms.
Any questions?
I would like to add too, just to tack on to what Eddie was talking about with the rescue squad. We know the rescue squad firsthand on a daily basis, whether it's them. Providing coverage at a structure fire. They had at least one crew with the Wonder Bar fire for most of the day. That started at 7:00 AM and I think we relieved the squad around 1:00. So that ties in, an entire crew. For our fire departments, we also had. Then 12 fire departments on seeing a dead fire. Because of manhattan, we had we went to a fourth alarm. And because of where the building was and the size of the fire, but these guys were there. They even they have other car accidents. I know he mentioned when. You know, CCE MS reports tied up because of crews being everywhere else or just plain busy. It does take time to get other crews here. As, you know, green force got a lower there's happening because of monetary issues, it it's a huge impact. We stand around a lot, whether it be on the police side or fire waiting for. Other agencies just because everybody's busy. And that's in the middle of the day when they have five crews working. So it is. The squad being staffed with that many crews, five, like you see, you might think, man, that's a lot of crews for for this small area that. Is being covered, but in the middle of the day when you're doing transport out of the hospital and everything else, time counts. One of the e bike accidents. We stood there waiting for crew because it was. Green board was tied up, with group, even five crews on that day. So it's just, it's vital to keep the amount of crews that we have in this area for the squad and. Have that relationship. We have a very relationship with, I think, both the fire departments do when. We see a third cat and they're out there assisting us, making sure our guys are good and making sure the community is is covered, so.
I think it's also, you know, they extended with what they did for the pet at the Wonder Bar, that they provide the options for cat. I think, you know. Those are those are the little things that, you know, go unrecognized, but we in a lot of our family member. And their pet is saved.
And I did, yeah, you bring that up, we did, we were able to locate a cat on the third floor. The homeowner wasn't home. And we brought the cat out in the squad using their pet oxygen and was able to make sure the cat was good and when the owner got got there later in the day, it was. Was turned back over, so.
And then also, Nick, you probably can also speak to EMS also provides coverage on our events, right, right? You know, whether it's the five day parade or whatever, they're they're stationed. Maybe a widow walking, we did, they're providing answers. I I decide still.
Absolutely.
Just real quick, does the EMS show up like immediately, even if it's a false alarm?
No, so our our Hudson Fire Department policy is that it's they are dispatched to any. Auto accident, reported injury, or any reported structural. Other than that, we're not tying them up for.
Because like we said, if we're going out of firing arm, they're not having to go there.
We do not, our department, I can't speak for our departments, does not have them coming for just false alarms and different things like that. It's only reported structure fires. And.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, question next. The management department reports.
Good evening, council. I have a brief report for you this evening. Provided we're in September, a lot of what I had fits shortly, but the next month report will have more data to report on. And so for last P, it was our first day, we had roughly. 50 kids registered in total. For our KU second group, we have 18 youth registered. And for our third to eighth grade group, we have 30 kids registered. The new launch with this year is we now have programming at the library. Excuse me, on the second floor of the library. So that's a a new venture for us. Last year, we were at. The fiscal building church on Newton Street near the courthouse. We are now on the second floor of the library. No longer paying there. So we were excited about that. And so for your review, just a list of some of the programming that you're currently offering. One of the programs that I'm really excited about is potentially bringing in a hip hop dance instructor for the kids. We have a lot of talent and we always look to to capitalize on that. Historically, patterns just kind of tell us that our enrollment will go up as we get through the week against day one. A lot of our outreach hits outward mouth as well as our social media platforms. We are also continuing our contract with Cover Kitchen. They will continue to be our vendor, helping us offer balanced meals to the kids. So grateful for Cover Kitchen, believe it or not, prior to I was cooking, I'm in the kitchen. And I will admit, I am not a chef, so it's still a great experience nonetheless. This was just to highlight our parents at the 11th annual community block party. Organized by Greater Hudson Prime neighborhood. That often serves as our. Opportunity to get signups earlier on rather than waiting till the last minute. And it's it's always a fun community event. This next slide applies to some of the building maintenance that we are pursuing at the youth center. You can kind of see visually there, there's a, yeah, there's a pigeon. And so in that area there, there's a opening in the roof. And we have about 15 pigeons in the rooftop of the building. They are dirtying up the place as you might imagine, and so. We are seeking, we are seeking services right now from Hudson Valley Wildlife. They are going to install a one-way piping system. Essentially, it's a slide mechanism that will allow track birds to exit safely while preventing new birds from coming in. And so this will be the temporary solution until till they patch that up completely.
Have you contacted Mike Tyson? Is he being questioned in taking?
Next, we are in full swing with with our youth department soccer league that kicked off right before Labor Day. And that will go out until October 18th. Right now, we have about, well, actually, this was last Friday. We had 126 kids registered. That's up 34 from last year. KU second, they will do skills and drills on Saturdays. And then our older kids, grades third to sixth, they will practice once a week and then they will play games on Saturdays. A huge shout out to the school district for allowing us to use their facilities, both the turf and brass field. So that we can, so that we can have YDSL. And then shortly around the corner, we are already gearing up for YDVL, which is our new basketball league. We just, we always, we feel like putting out registration earlier is always our best way to get the most. And so that's that's another thing that we're excited about. Next year, so 2026, 2027, we are considering revisiting our registration fee. That was something that I think we were mindful of coming off of COVID. You know, folks are really hit hard, whether physically or financially. And so that in mind, we want to get back to a registration fee, both for accountability and for revenue purposes. It's, I think, families commit more when they, you know, pay 20 bucks to get junior to practice or what have you. And it does to make the coordinating of creating teams a lot easier for us. So that way we kind of expect again junior to kind of show up as they paid that bad that fee, if you will. And then beyond that, these are some photos of our soccer league. Another huge shout out to the parents who come, they they get involved, they help support the drills and skills. And so. It's always fun to see a community out there on Saturdays. That's that that will conclude presentation for the evening.
Hudson, any questions?
Kevin, you said the second floor of the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where was that?
Hudson area library.
I know. So what what room are you using in this?
Yeah, so we pretty much did get the space with the senior center. So you have those two larger rooms and then a smaller room and that better. We used the smaller room and the room to the left, kind of all to the left side. And we leave the first room for senior services.
So what changed? Because I recommended that two years ago when the light, when the turf was not ADH compliant, now it's told. That there was an issue of using that space. So what changed? From now now to use that space?
Yeah, perhaps the players. I I just think, you know, we were able, we had a really productive discussion leading up to us coming into the space.
Let you know I was going there, like, so I. But now it's a player for us.
I can see.
But so so how does that affect the senior center part of the ceremony tomorrow? So so is it their their program is going to be kind of, you guys can. Kind of work that out, schedule.
Yeah, from my understanding, they're done roughly about 1:30 ish.
That's the count.
That's the county.
What's that?
That's the county program. We we pay staff to.
Okay, so well, I know for us, we there there isn't any overlap. So programming for us, we have kids in the building by roughly 3 o'clock. So by that hour, we're not overlapping with with the senior center, with the senior center. We're ending the the programming that they have ongoing. It we it doesn't prevent them from occupying their space. They're still invited to to be in their space. We had a really productive meeting with. With everyone, representatives from Perfect 10, Emily from the library, the mayor's office. It was a really productive discussion to talk about really these logistics and just ongoing ventures provided we now have. Perfect 10, the seniors and the youth department in the building.
And the library, I mean, it's great.
And in my library, quiet hours studying or whatever, I can guess. Certainly, and that's another thing we're excited about, to just have all of the literacy programs, we're just taking a kid down there to read in the library.
Next, police report.
I don't need you today. I'll start with our normal HPD reports that we sent out to you guys. Section 9 report for August. We had two defensive action reports. It was one incident. With a fellow that didn't want to be arrested down at the railroad tracks. They were able to arrest him just using physical force to get that done, so. So we had to do a report on that. For arrests and bookings, we had 37 arrests with 65 total charges for the month of August. We had four emotionally disturbed cursing calls. And lucky enough, we had zero overdose calls or Narcan or anything like that, so that was good. For our body worn camera supervisor reports, there's nothing, everything was pretty normal, nothing to report on that. And just to kind of recap, so arrests that we made, some felony arrests that we made for August, I put, we put them online. But I'll just go over them, but. On June 30th, HPD received a 911 call for a shots fired down at front in Warren. We did the investigation on that. Detectives did through that investigation. We discovered who the shooter was. So we arrested him. It was a Jaden Morrison of Hudson. And we arrested him for criminal possession of a weapon second, which was a class E felony. And reckless endangerment in the first degree of class D felony. Also, another major thing we had in Hudson was a robbery of a Uber driver. Basically, on August 20th, around 12:40 AM, we received a 911 call. Reporting that the driver was robbed. Their driver did report that. The end of one of the individuals had a weapon, but it was not displayed. He ended up giving off cash. Food order and his iPhone. A couple of days later, we arrested Jaden Morrison again for felonies, along with a Demetrius Matthews. Matty Junior and a Thomas Tranquira the third, and they were all arrested for robbery of second degree of class D felony. And Grant Larson, Larsonian four, the class D felony. Just so you know, for that case, that that felony case was presented to Plumlee County Superior. I don't know. Really done to that level. I told you guys last time you. That. HPD got a new CAT system and the. I don't know how you say, the parent company or the one it's called, it's ran by Tyler. So now we're we're doing a new RMS system that goes along with the CAT system, which is our record system. And that will be implemented in October, but it's months of training for us because the record system we have now is called AMIT. And we've had it since 2003. It's 22 years old and, you know, pretty much at this point it helps lead, but it's going to be a lot of training. What was nice about that was we got a $300,000 grant for that system through New York State DCGS. And the system, the Tyler system for CAT. CCSO is the lead on that, but they, I'm sorry, 911 dispatch, Plumlee County 911. They're the lead agency on that, but basically we got a $100,000 plus system off of them, so. We should have paid for that either, so. We're basically half a million dollars worth of product we're getting. So we're happy about that and much needed. School resource officer Brett Rab, just just so you know, in August, he completed a week long SRO school. And that just keeps them up to date with policies and, you know, things with active shooters and stuff like that. So that was a good school for him. For the first week of school, we had, I know that's September, but no accidents, we did a good job, state police. HPD are out there, we have our message board out there, everything was good. I think we're a little bit slow and jammed up, but other than that, no accidents, so. No, no one injured or anything crazy like that, so we're happy with that. So we're happy with that. Oh, update for the e-bike accident we had. The e-bike operator was issued a ticket for failure to stop at the stop sign. He is obviously out of the hospitals, came to HPD to go his, uh, property. And I think that's about all I have.
I mean, that, no, I'm shooting from the council.
Uh, the e-bike rider, what hurt his injuries or his?
Yep, it was a key. Um, the operator's name was Todd Lane. Uh, he suffered injuries to his head, uh, facial injuries and head injuries. Uh, he's out of the hospital now. Like I said, he came to the HPD on September ninth and he was issued his, uh, ticket for not stopping at that stop sign.
Margaret. Yeah, just again on the e-bike thing, um, as you know, Jenny and I have been right before the accident, actually. We were talking about safety and e-bikes. And so we would like to follow up with you, with you about looking at a safety program, for example. Um, and educational and then also enforcement. And the two areas I think that you had identified in the city were the last time we spoke, uh, was down around Front Street. And then, um, on the road works, those seem to be the areas. And I think also we should include scooters in that. Um, so I've been, I've been monitoring over the last few days, about last couple of weeks, um, how people are behaving. And, uh, we just two days ago at the intersection of Stewart, it's the same, same thing that people on bikes, whether it's speed bikes or not, behave as if they are pedestrians, just going walking. And so I was coming down twenty-three to continue on to breathe. Uh, you know, that intersection is tricky and you should, uh, they, the lights. There was a cyclist with a kitty carrying everything in his car or not. So comes to the red light at the intersection, looks around and then goes through the red light. So this, this is an educational issue. This is, and I said, I've been making a note of many of these incidents. I've also, uh, noted a couple of extraordinarily compliant people. Um, but I think we really need a educational campaign. And perhaps the, um, the bikes people, bike squad people that you've got would be good point people on, on doing that.
I think maybe working with the youth department and working with the school, the schools, the wicked also really good idea.
Yeah.
Um, just to, just to get the word out, I, I, I have a personal thing about just, I have a really good friend. Um, Doc, as a result of a bike accident, because he wasn't wanting to be helped. So it's, um, for me, this is kind of, you know, I, I'm watching the kids in my neighborhood, just black clothes, like.
HPD has, uh, well, some last meeting and obviously the bike accident, uh, with the man injury and said, we did step on patrol. I know they have been blowing over, but yeah, we definitely need more.
Yeah, yeah.
See, I'm actually seeing.
Yep.
We have a question. Um, yeah, that would be another one.
Yeah.
Up in that, up in that area is your issue.
So is there any, uh, is there any update on the parking chaos in that?
I have a lot of data in the park room.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I need to follow up with you, Doreen.
Okay.
Um, so.
So I've been doing an analysis of the, I know that going forward, that the park bureau has a plan for engaging collection agency. Um, as of right now, from the report I was given by Chief Franklin, there are fifteen thousand three hundred and five unpaid tickets. So totaling a value of seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars. And, and that it's pretty much evenly split between ticket and the fine because we haven't built in the, the where finance department is looking about how we're reporting to them. If you look at the top to give you a sense of perspective, we have six people who owe more than, um, top six owe more than a thousand dollars each. Uh, and the top fifty combined, um, owe thirty-nine thousand dollars. So this is something that frankly, I mean, we, we're going to have a better plan going forward, but honestly, this is a disgrace. Um, not to you, because what you weren't involved, but we have to do better at compliance. We have to do better at actually collecting monies that are due. Um, but a lot of these tickets are not like high fog and high dollar numbers. Uh, there's one individual here who had over thirty tickets and you and I talked about him giving you a list of, um, things that have current violations and large number of them. So that at least when the offices are going around, they could even if the car is currently parked illegally, it might be on their list of maybe ten people that you really need.
I think you're gonna find over, I mean, it's still fairly new. Uh, you're gonna find since we took over, it's gonna.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, that's gonna change, it's gonna.
Yeah, I understand.
What's the name? It wasn't even.
Yeah, I mean, I just want, I just thought to give a, like, to quantify for us. I mean, this is a large sum of money that we need.
Yeah, I looked at the list, the bottom list, what you are like out of the state.
Sorry, yeah, but, but it just, no, I just analyzed it. I mean, I analyzed them. No, but I analyzed that. And what I have found is that when you look at the out of state plates, if you, like, one of them is a Massachusetts plate.
Yeah.
That has.
Five ones, yeah.
But they're recent, so this is a person and then you can't, yeah, this is somebody who lives in Hudson. Um, and has some changes to plates. And so you can't just look at whether it's an out of state, you have to look at, is it an out of state that has a ticket from three years ago and nothing else? That's obviously somebody tapping. But if it's, uh, New Jersey, like, New Jersey, Connecticut and Massachusetts are the prominent places of the ones who could have, uh, recurring tickets and from where the tickets are being issued, they're clearly living in Hudson. So that, that on its own is not sufficient variables for.
Kevin, can you think, I know you have to talk to the chair too, but do you think you can add data regarding parking on our, on your monthly meetings and then?
I think that would be good.
Kind of keep a pulse on that and see how, how you are improving.
Yes, everything's just so, it's like the chaos. Our plan is to get the six that are installed operational, but we're running into some hiccups with the actual company. So it's not, I'm trying, believe me. So, yeah, I mean, I can do that, it's just, I still feel it's so new. It's kind of hard to get a baseline of exactly what, like, what would you like in that report?
Well, kind of what Margaret's saying, that, you, you know, you, you know, in terms of where you started with, because it's not your control, right? You're doing catch up and where you are now, right? So then you can see the increase of the improvement of what's going on. It's gonna be a slow rolling, I totally understand that. But at least it's said that something's working and it's improved.
So I think, um, like from Doreen's perspective, um, uh, X number of tickets issued and many have been paid. Uh, and going forward, it's going to be a notification and then a second notification and then it goes to collection. So she just, it'll take a couple of months for that ticket to kick in and to be rolling. But that kind of, um, reporting and then how many, uh, have actually paid, uh, the tickets after being prosecuted. But I think that would kind of, so you have a kind of a float.
I'll work on it. It's not exactly what you're looking for.
Rich, um, just so people understand, um, definitely about the police model to say, but parking, uh, ticket revenue is like, we have this real revenue. Because of how the reports that she records that as income coming in. Whereas, um, property taxes unpaid, that is money that has already been budgeted that we are expecting in. And only the fees and the, uh, fines on that property tax is additional revenue. So it is, so when we get these new requests for funding, yes, if we have the parking revenues coming in, then we would have that, we would pay for it. Thanks like EMS and all this other service that we do need. So that is real money coming through. I think right now what the finance committee needs to look at as well is that right now after X number of days, the fee goes up. So I want to say maybe thirty-five a month.
Yeah, we put in, we put in an escalating.
Yeah, but it doesn't go beyond that. It's a problem. So this could very well, so we need to redo those fees so that after sixty days, after ninety days, that could escalate. So this is a, this is a small number, believe it or not, because it could be much greater if we did have a six year line, which is what other cities do. And so, yeah.
But yeah, thing is, if we like, uh, thirty day or sixty day, the fine, but we have to get solutions to go up at them. And, you know, like other cities, like in New York, the, the New York city and stuff like that, you couldn't pay your fine up to sudden time or three years and it's cause your license plate, you know? I mean, it's cause your license and they do like.
The fact that Chief Franklin laid out to me was that she's working with the collection agency. And that after, right now, they only send one, only one notice goes out of thirty days, which you can see in the database. Uh, they will, there will be a second notice and it will go to collections. And then collections will be responsible for following up. And the person who's being pursued will have to pay the collections fee. But that doesn't come out of the city gets back the actual fine that's going to be collected. But this is going, instead of just being the, we'll mention it once and then you never hear from us again, which is what's perfect, I think. The process is going to be one where actually both collections and collections will pursue that individual.
Yeah.
But I think your idea about the license is also, that's, that's a good.
Yeah. I wanted to figure out how to.
Yeah, yeah.
How to go up to the license and.
Yeah. Yeah, and also booting cars when, when there's, you know, repeated.
Yeah, we're still booting, yes.
Yeah.
I'll take that, how many boots and all that as well.
Yeah, that would be good.
I'm sure you've seen two booties and that one that's probably.
Sorry, can you wait?
Yeah, yeah, the parking is the big, uh, I mean, yes, so we should focus on.
But I mean, seven hundred and forty-three thousand dollars.
Yeah, we're, it's definitely a priority for us. Obviously we have other stuff, but we need it prior. I think you're gonna find out in years' time.
Yeah.
It's gonna be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, just basic stuff.
Yeah, they are booting because I've seen it.
Yeah, I see. Yeah, it's this little stuff that.
It's not a lot of.
And we're just, we're picking it up, believe me.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, Rob, Rob, people listening, I hope you, that's Heather, um, Moniz, her report.
Hello, everybody. I'm gonna share my screen. Hey, can everybody see that?
Yes. Can you make it bigger? Lauren, do you, can you use some taller size? Heather, can you make them a bit bigger?
Yes, I can. How's that?
That's great, yeah, that's great, thank you.
Okay, some of the usual numbers. Um, so these are actuals through July. Uh, you can see we continue to be significantly lower than, um, our, uh, anticipated budget on plumbing and building permits, which is obviously not ideal. Um, I did touch base with Craig and he just said that there's, you know, not as many large projects as we had anticipated happening. So we'll obviously keep an eye on that going forward. Um, I know there are a bunch in the pipeline, so I think some of it might have been, um, us anticipating that those would be in the pipeline a little faster than they've come through. Um, I know there's a couple in front of the industrial development agency looking for pilots. And obviously construction on those isn't going to start until a decision is made on that. Um, so we will just continue to track it. Um, on a slightly more positive note, parking revenues are looking, um, pretty much on trend for budget. We're at fifty-eight percent of the year and we're at fifty percent of budget overall. You can see that's a low of, um, forty-three percent of anticipated budget for on and off street parking, which are the meters, um, and a high of seventy percent for parking and other permits. Parking tickets is also high at sixty-seven percent and front street lot is basically in line what we projected at fifty-five. Um, a couple of new pieces of information this month for, uh, various taxes. Uh, we did get the second sales tax contribution, so I apologize, I should say two of four, um, not one of four. And so we're at one point one four seven million, uh, which is forty-eight percent of budget. Um, the budget was basically, uh, flat versus twenty twenty-four. And you can see that, um, it was basically flat versus what actually came in in twenty twenty-four because we don't know the prior year number until after the budget has been, uh, created. So we're at forty-eight percent of the budget. It's very close to, um, what we anticipated, so I think that number's looking good. Uh, lodging tax continues to be an estimate, but I think it's a pretty good estimate. But again, we're having technology issues on every front at this point. Um, so right now it looks that we're at about two hundred and sixty-one, two hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars, um, which is only thirty-five percent of budget, although fifty-three percent above where we were a year ago. And, uh, again, uh, the same issues that are, you know, at least somewhat impacting the building permits in terms of some of these larger projects, uh, that we were hoping would kick off faster are impacting this as well. There's at least two, uh, proposed hotels, one at Fourth and Warren and then one of the old Elks Club, uh, that are in the process of development. Um, so we may not see that, all of that revenue this year, but we certainly would anticipate once those developments are in place, that that, uh, lodging tax revenue stream would increase based on those. Uh, the most interesting new number tonight is we finally got a number from the county for our cannabis tax. Um, it is not as ideal as I think we would have hoped. Uh, this number is through May and it actually includes December of twenty twenty-four as well. So that's a six-month number of sixty-five thousand. Uh, if you extrapolate that out on a straight line basis, that would give you about a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars of taxes for the year versus the two thirty-five that we had anticipated. You know, again, there's another dispensary that is scheduled to open in the next, you know, four months or so. And we also don't know what's gonna happen. Uh, these numbers are only through May, so you know, you've got June, July, August and September, which is the high tourism months and just more people out on the sidewalks on a general basis because of the weather. So I would not be surprised to see the next quarter of numbers, uh, be higher than, than just a straight line trend. But obviously we're going to be looking at that every month. Don't know how often we're going to get the actual numbers, but we are going to try and look at it every month. And mortgage tax, again, uh, we won't know until we get the second, one out of two payments, until we get the second one where we net out on that this year. Um, in terms of financial reporting, we are still in the middle of the audit. Um, we're still anticipating it will be done by October twenty twenty-five. Uh, I know last month we also reported that we had to do a single federal audit because we incurred over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in federal expenditures. Turns out because we also spent a significant amount of money, uh, from the Department of Transportation, which is all the things you see, CHIPS, uh, state touring group, pave our potholes, pave New York, um, and extreme weather recovery. All of those are, are dot funded. And if you go over a certain amount on that, it turns out you need a single audit for that too. So we lucked out and we got to do all three of them this year. And so they are all underway, but I'm still confident that we're going to meet our, um, our deadline. Worst case scenario, as long as it's done by the end of the fiscal year, we will meet our requirements as far as the municipal bond market. And that's obviously always my goal. Um, operational, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna echo, uh, what HPD was talking about. We have been converting to new systems, uh, over the past few months. Uh, it's a tremendous amount of work. Uh, there's a tremendous amount of training. Uh, it's very challenging to try and get that all done. You know, when you have an office of three people and we just converted our tax software a week and a half ago and one of my two staffers moved to a different position. So it's literally been just two of us trying to take care of all of the daily work, the daily business, converting to a new tax system software and trying to figure out the new general ledger software that we just installed a few months ago. So it's been, um, if, if, if you have any time, stop by and, and please tell Danielle to hang on. She's doing a great job. It's very stressful right now for all of us. Um, and please also welcome our new employee Jackie, who just started last week. Um, yeah, I'm not gonna go much more into the financial systems upgrades, but suffice it to say, it has been very challenging. Um, I don't believe that we have necessarily received the capabilities that we were told we were gonna have, which is gonna make things challenging. Um, they are now telling us that we have used up all of our hours. So there is a good chance that next week's meeting, I will have a budget amendment. Um, because they've kind of got us over a barrel. We are negotiating with them on certain issues, um, which I won't go into detail of. Uh, my most favorite thing, because it is about to be budget season, is that we were told that the budgeting software would have all the capabilities of our very old budgeting software and it does not appear to. Um, most specifically, it does not appear to have any way of tracking within the system of whatever mod. of whatever modifications we make as we go through the budget process, which to me is a very important need to document, so you know, any department or, you know, the non-departmental ones as well, we can say, they asked for this, they got this, here are the changes that the BEA made during the budget process. So I am going to have to figure out in a relatively short amount of time how I'm going to do that, because apparently, I can't do it with the current budgeting capability that is in the software. That rolls right into the twenty-twenty-six budget, so department budget requests are due by September tenth. You know, generally, they come to me, I load them into the system so that we've got documents that everybody can look at, and then we start scheduling the BEA meetings. We generally start with the departmental reviews, we generally have one meeting per department to review those, and then after all the departments have had their say, the BEA continues to meet, to continue to review, sorry, continue to review those, to look at revenue projections and to try and determine how we're gonna make the budget balance. So in general, those meetings start around the last week in September, so my target is going to continue to be that, although I clearly have a lot to figure out in terms of how this new system's gonna work. Nothing new on lodging tax, we're still, y-you have noted that the number that I gave was an estimate because we're still having issues getting required reporting as they upgraded the new system, so we're having a lot of fun with technology in my office these days. Foreclosure proceedings. Okay, so we issued a thirty-day demand letter on the attorney's letterhead in mid-July. So after we initial the first list, after we issued the first list, we kind of realized that it, it's an ever-changing number because we are required by law to take the most recent delinquent taxes first, which means if you owe, let's say, twenty-twenty-three taxes, the twenty-twenty-four school taxes would have not put you, even if you had them, that alone would not have triggered you onto the delinquent list. But because we have to take those first if you have them, they now get added into the total number. So the number that we're, that we're working with, and it's a static number because we're not updating the penalties because we, we don't have the bandwidth to do that, but basically, the number at a point in time was based, three-point-one-nine-eight million of outstanding taxes at that point in time. As of this week, or as of last week, sixty properties have redeemed for a total of seven-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand dollars, it's twenty-three percent of the outstanding taxes, so that's pretty great. We had, you know, a handful of, of very big people come in and pay off, which was great. And again, that's all without going to title searches, so we're not adding those extra fees onto the taxpayers' accounts yet, and we haven't gone through the official effort of publishing the revised list with the county clerk's office and all the other work we have to do. One exciting development is that, oh, I misspelled Randall, I forgot an Ellen's name, I apologize. So Supervisor Randall Martin came to my office a week or two ago and was inquiring about a temporary plan that was in place somewhere in the two thousand, I know it ended in two thousand twelve, so I think it was roughly two thousand ten to two thousand twelve, where the council approved a alternative installment agreement, i.e. payment plan, which called for only ten percent down and a thirty-six-month payback versus the one and only installment agreement that the city currently can offer, which is twenty-five percent down and twenty-four-month payback. President Di Pietro and Council Attorney Peck have been developing revisions to a local law for you to review. My understanding is you will have that on your desk next week. I obviously encourage you to consider passing it, even though ten percent down and thirty-six, thirty-six months may cost a little more in the long run, it does make it more achievable for people that can't come up with that twenty-five percent down. And as I said, this replicates a, a measure that was in place from somewhere between two thousand eight or two thousand ten up until early two thousand and twelve, so it has been done before, particularly during difficult economic times.
Heather, I want to ask, I just want to ask a question on this. While you're on the taxes, the seven-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand that has come in, is any of that coming in based on installment plan or are they all people who paid everything that was due?
Nope, we have actually, we have actually, and that was a whole other thing, just so much bad timing. Moving to a new tax colo-, tax collection software while we're also starting a foreclosure process was very challenging, so one of the first things, obviously, that I focused on was to make sure that the installment agreement technology worked, and it took us a couple weeks, but we did get it done, and at this point, we have actually successfully put four people into installment agreement plans. And we have, we have, you know, ever since the, the oper-, the potential of having the ten percent down plan has come into consideration, we have been telling people who have been inquiring that this seems like it's gonna be on the docket, it seems like it's going to pass, there's a good chance that this might be an alternative for you, but obviously, we cannot guarantee it, and so far, none of the four people who have entered into an agreement so far were interested in that. They, they prefer to do the higher down payment and to shorten the payment off. I will also, yep, I will also just say, this is more of an FYI, so when you, when you're out talking to your community about these options, is that they also do have the ability to come in at any point in time and pay that installment agreement plan off in full. They don't have to, you know, pay out for the whole twenty-four months, they can come in after twelve months if, if they happen to, you know, come across the funds and then they'll save that amount of interest. Just want you all to know that, too. So in terms of next steps, I also had a, a very productive meeting with Michelle Tulo, obviously Housing Justice Director, and she has been doing work looking for, you know, financial and/or legal resources that the city can point people to, so she and I had a very productive conversation about that. I've talked to the attorney again and we're thinking, instead of immediately going to title searches, issuing a second letter, especially to, you know, the, the smaller, the, the smaller homeowners with the, the smaller delinquencies, and I've actually, and, and you know, in addition to saying, hey, guys, you still owe this money and hey, you know, we need to figure out what we're gonna do about it, also potentially providing some information, both in terms of the potential, potentially two different payment plan options and the other resources that Michelle has potentially identified, and Randall is also, and Randall and Teresa Joyner are also working on, I think, some financial literacy things, separate, I think Michelle is going to, to try and pull all of that together, and our goal is to try and put together a one-sheet or a two-sheet that sort of says, hey, you have options, you have some resources, here what they are. I've reached out to our attorney and said, basically, hey, if we do this, can you include them with the letter you send out? I only reached out to him today on that, and you know, I think one of the other questions, and I think it's a question that we can, we can discuss, is, is it better coming together with the communication from the attorney or is it better coming separately from the city on city letterhead? Will people take it more seriously one way or another? It, I, I obviously don't have the answer to that, it's going to be a, you know, a guess. Obviously, doing it with the attorney saves us on postage and letterhead and all of that stuff, but you know, most importantly, we wanna make sure we get the message out in a way that people are seeing and are finding compelling, so.
Okay. Can I, I want to, Heather, one second, one second, I have a question on that. Rich, Heather, the last report that you published, was that in May, and is, is there a new one coming out anytime soon or no?
When you say report, what do you mean? Do you mean a, a list of the delinquents?
Yeah, the delinquent, because there's people, safe face folks that are out there who were wondering if it's good and fortunate, if they paid.
Yeah, well, one of the things that we're gonna have to do, and by we, I, I mean me, is I'm gonna have to provide a revised list to the attorney when we're ready to file it with the county, so I can do, I will absolutely have to do that. I can, I can go ahead and publish, I don't see any reason why I can't go ahead and publish the, the old one with the people that have been removed, taken out of it, so I should be able to do that and I can do that this week. The one thing I won't be able to do is, is I can't update it for, you know, what the actual amount is because of new penalties and things like that, because it's incredibly laborious and I don't even know how to do it in the new system, to be fair, but I will, I will commit to getting the revised list up on the city website before the end of the week.
Yeah, people will be happy to see it in the report, so yes. Those who hear something, Heather?
Yeah, I just, Heather, when you were talking about potentially sending a separate letter from the city versus concluding it with the letter from the attorney, I think something to think about as you look at that is that it may actually be confusing to people to get two different pieces of correspondence and they may not know which one applies, I've got this attorney letter and I got the city telling me I can take this other project, whereas if it comes in one thing, then they know that, you know, these are coming together and it's not two separate communications from different people, so that's something to take into consideration, I think.
Yeah, I mean, that, that was absolutely my gut, that was actually my gut reaction, but the only reason I'm thinking it may be the other way is because apparently, there were a not small handful of people that thought that potentially the attorney's letter was just a scam, and there has been real estate scam letters going out recently. Yeah, but I, I tend to think it would be better because I think that also would make it more, they would realize that it was a, a attorney slash city communication as opposed to just coming from the attorney. So hopefully, the attorney will say, yeah, well, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll envelope stuff for you and send it all out in one.
I think, I think, I think you're right, I think if, if I got a letter from the attorney or the city, I would think the attorney's more binding to me than a letter from the city, so I think coming from the attorney, to me, it's a little bit more trusting in, in a way, as long as, you know, as long as the wording is about, you know, the city doing this, right? But I think the letter from the attorney to me is, is more secure binding on a, you know, on agreement.
Okay. Are you, are you done, Heather, or is it more?
No, I'm done, the rest of this is, yeah, no, the rest of this is old, so we're fine, I'm done.
Okay, one more question that I have. Thanks, Heather.
All right, one last one.
Two things, I just found that the letter, I mean, would be too confusing and it would be too much money to do letters from both these attorney and the city, so it's just unconsidered, I don't know how that falls out, you know, we need to answer, but, and on the budget software, with the vendor, with tracking the modification, is it just not available or is it like, are they just not receptive to hearing your, your concerns on modifications?
You know, I, I would say in general, they're, they're receptive to hearing the concerns, but at the same time, they are, yeah, it's, it's been challenging. I would say they're receptive to hearing concerns, but they are not necessarily receptive to hearing concerns that don't have dollar signs attached to them.
Oh, you answered my question, I'm back.
Thank you, thank you, Heather.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have resolutions. Have you approved, first resolution in the commission, the second, please. One, Garrett. Second resolution, through the planning board, training, introduction, the second, please. The third accepts Spanish underground donations, Roma and Juan. And last is a resolution naming Charlie's Way, and instruction of the second fix, Roma and Juan. Okay, um, there's a bunch of local laws on our desk, there's no match on them tonight, so we're gonna go into an executive session with this, as a matter of real estate. Oh, sorry. Do you want to read one?
I thought we were gonna read one about a problem.
Oh, yeah, okay, that's sweet.
That's fine, we did, I know that to the clerk, I don't hear and we see it that or not, but I'm gonna share it really quickly. Dear Clerk Faulkner and Congress Council members, we are ready to request that a street in Houston be named in honor of my beloved father, Charles Fettworth. My father served as superintendent of public works in Houston for thirty-seven years. He put himself through college earning a degree in civil engineering, once he landed his position carrying Houston in that life. During his tenure as superintendent, he played an inter-, he played an integral role in the historic revitalization of the Antra Station, secured numerous grants for the city, and developed numerous programs that greatly benefited Houston. He also created, coordinated, and was a member of the flag day parade for twelve years. He was extremely proud of Houston and spent the majority of his life dedicated to its preservation and products. Those who know him personally, you are aware, he was extremely generous, quietly helped numerous employees and families in the city of Houston. In response to those, this is fair to him, the values of hard work dedication and how all your choices have our reaching in the past. Since our progress such an integral part of revitalization, development, and beautification of the water park at the Antra Station, we have proposed naming the section of the street from Ferry Street Bridge to the Antra parking lot, Charlie's Way, as he had a vision that resulted in rejuvenation of our historic waterfront property. The distance measures three-hundred-and-sixty feet. We are extremely proud daughters of a dedicated conscientious city official who had a long lasting impact on the city of Houston. We feel naming this part of the roadway, Charlie's Way, would be one of the most genuine and appropriate ways to honor his memory and legacy. We are grateful for your consideration of this request. Sincerely, and proudly submitted by our Charles Fettworth brothers. I am Jill Hamley, Charlie Joe Barwell, and as my sister came up.
Thank you.
Hi, well. So, thank you, and, oh, this lawyer, I did sponsor this, and Charlie was my father's first cousin in my second, and, you know, growing up and having him see what he did at the city, and, you know, also the community, because he also, you know, coached the Charles Barwin scheme, too, so he wasn't just a worker, he also instilled some community into, you know, in what he did for the city. One of the things that, you know, as a youngster, he, he taught me into supporting flag day in terms of, and that's what I've been doing from then on, and one of the reasons that he did it, he, I was doing the sound system, and he, and he said to me, he goes, I need to do the sound, sound system at the, at the promenade hill, and I'm like, I'm not gonna be able to do this, he goes, whatever you need. And so I said, I need to raise the speakers, he goes, no problem, so he put a scissor thing down there and the speakers went up. I thought I was getting out of it, but no, he, he made sure that scissor got up and that speaker got up, so whatever, whatever the city needed, he was there, so I think this is a great dedication, this is pretty true.
Okay, and, yes. Okay, any motions on the executive session? Second? All of you can hear, sing my, say nine?
Tom, Tom, just say the reason for the executive session.
Okay, sorry, we're gonna be discussing our real estate transaction.
Hello, excuse me for breaking in, my hand is raised, will you be coming back from executive session?
You can do, go quickly, what's about?
I'm, I, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
I said, you can speak now, what's about?
Okay, well, I wanted to make a remark about the situation of the Young Warehouse, which I saw on your radar.
You're, you're fading out.
We cannot hear you.
All right, I, I'm gonna try again next week, because our technology.
We can't hear you, you're fading out.
See, you might have it next week.
Yeah, try next week.
Okay. Somebody goes now. You want to, uh? Okay. Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, it was, sorry.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
In here, we're.
This is what I mean, I have this, because I'm. This is what I mean, after this, because.
You want something else to say?
I have something I want to put on table. Carol, no, she, she missed the question.
So, okay. Okay, okay, stop. Okay?
Yeah.
Okay.